Was very cute.
Time is good.
Well, we can see the participants.
Superstained at any time.
We have it.
Done.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, dear.
I'm her.
Oh.
Oh, right.
Today.
Today.
How are we on going? She's been blind, so she had.
Yeah, she was all.
Give it to mine.
No, thank you. He's November thirtieth, but I think maybe he was gone, I don't know.
Do we call it meeting of all or special meeting or should I say?
Uh, I mean, I think you just call the meeting order.
Um, alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call um the committee of a whole meaning to order. It is open on February eleven twenty twenty five. Um, I don't know if everybody here is present. Um, and do we do the pledge of allegiance?
We don't know.
Okay.
Fine.
No. Yeah, we're gonna sway that today. Think about it next time, we'll see. Okay, um, would someone like to approve today's agenda?
Um, I do have a requested addition to discussion items number six. Um, progressive change order. That's a late addition.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition of progressive change order.
I'll support the motion support further discussion. You're none, all in favor, by post. Maybe public comment, we do not have anybody in our audience today, do we? And it looks like we do not have anybody joining us.
No.
Okay. So I will close the public comment section of today's meeting. And there are no action items for today. So let's move right down into the discussion items. Um. We'll be going over February's board packet.
So we're gonna start.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna start. No worries, we're starting at page thirty five. This would be the poverty guideline.
And as far as. Um. Poverty guidelines, we did those over here and it's just kind of housekeeping, we just have to approve everything.
Correct.
I mean, are there any changes to or?
There are no changes to it. Um, the recommendation is to keep it as is. Um, and we do, we approve it annually. And we're doing it before the board, March Board Review Meetings. Um, if there's anybody got any questions on this item? I know you've all seen this before.
Yeah.
Every year.
Yes.
And we all, I don't even want to answer. Some say that.
Alright.
Shall I move to?
I don't think we have to, no, we don't think.
No, it's all discussed.
No.
You have no action.
I know, it's hard.
I'll do that tomorrow unless I forgot. That's right.
Hard to switch gears, though, enough.
Cool, alright, moving on, right?
Moving on. Okay.
Paving and dust control work orders.
Yeah, so every year we have paving and dust control uh work orders that we get from the county. So the paving orders are by our requests. So they're all based on our capital improvement plan um that the engineer helps us put together. And oh, I like to be.
No, why is we don't have to cut the ribbon?
I like that, okay.
Yeah, they will be there, it's a public meeting.
You want your work like bosses. I didn't mean to.
No.
No, bro.
Hello, who's yours?
Yeah.
I just come off my nap.
Sorry.
Where were you?
So this year, this year we do have two um paving projects that we submitted to the county. Um, one is for sixty fifth street. So it's a resurfacing from one twenty eighth avenue to Riverside Drive. It's just under a mile. Um, estimated cost is gonna be a hundred eighty seven thousand. And then we have a second resurfacing on one twenty ninth avenue. So sixty sixth street to the end. And that's about half a mile. So total, we're looking at about two hundred eighty thousand five hundred dollars. This will be budgeted for next fiscal year. Because this is construction twenty twenty five, so most likely occurring after July first. And then we have some dust control projects. These stay the same every year because these are all the unfated roads. We do have um significant section of road that's coming off. So we will no longer have to do dust control on Riverside Drive or dugout road because the milling improvements are going to start this spring. And so we won't get to the point where we have to do dust control on those roads. So that's a positive. Um, we didn't get a number assigned to this in the past. We've spent about fifteen thousand dollars consistently. I imagine that number's gonna come down because we were doing dust control on less roads. Um. And we did get um indication from the road commission that they are going to pursue a gravel road millage at some point. Um, so what they're hoping to do is have a separate millage that enables them to pave all of the existing gravel roads in the county.
Well, that's.
Yeah, which would be great for us because, you know, we have, we definitely have some, not a ton of gravel roads, but we do. Hmm?
I'm just surprised, I'm thinking of like, you know, Hopkins area, there's a lot of.
Which is, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is why they want the separate millage.
What?
They want, that's why they want the separate millage.
That's a huge undertaking, that's.
It's a big undertaking. It's like a decade's worth of work. They've kind of figured it out. But, yeah, they wanted a separate funding mechanism to help them transition all the gravel roads to paved roads. Um, they haven't announced when it's gonna be on the ballot. It's just, it's something that they're working on.
Of course. Well, I'm, yeah.
Well, we had, it's called a pay.
A machine, they actually, they're.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, what you're saying.
We had some residents coming. So you don't pave my road.
Right, yeah.
Right, that's not, no, that's.
Oh, we could, I guess we could request that one, a road not be. And I don't think they would do all, they wouldn't do a local road, they would only do a.
It's like valley and.
Maybe it won't come to fruition, I don't know. That's something they were talking about in their annual meeting, though. Was looking at adopting a millage for gravel roads and then transitioning gravel roads to paved roads.
Pay for it, that's right.
Valley.
The village to.
Yeah, it's paved, aren't they?
All hung out.
Yeah.
No, it's not, it's gravel.
Good.
Too hard on the horse.
Uh, I can see that, I can see that.
You're right.
Do you have any questions about the projects?
No. No.
No.
Okay. So then we'll submit these work orders and then we will plan for these expenses in the next fiscal year. And that's actually, I mean, two hundred and eighty thousand five hundred for road projects is, that's a pretty uh, I don't wanna say a low number, but that's a, that's a pretty good number going into next fiscal year, especially if we're taking on sidewalk project.
Mm-hmm.
So given that lower number, it shouldn't eat in so much to our fund balance because we do bring in close to a million dollars in, in tax revenue for the, the uh, the road millage. So we should, this, this is a, it's a good thing.
Yeah. Cool. Alright. Ready to respond?
So.
Government's policies?
Government's policy, so this might take a little more time.
I promised last night it wouldn't hit on.
Okay. Well, we can always like, yeah, thank you if you have questions, but um.
I'm sorry, put the media up, yeah, I did. Because we went through this page, I think, last month. Are there changes you want to point out to us?
Because I will point out some changes. So we submitted this to this Ron Bolte. He came back with lots of comments. The vast majority were like clarifications. So they really weren't anything of like real substance. So I just went ahead and made those changes. Um, something that I didn't highlight in the change that I guess could border on substance, there were remarks in some of the policies that required the township board to take this action by this date um, or required us to take certain steps before a policy was adopted. Ron recommended that we soften those language, that language too. We could look at these things or should look at these things. So make them more optional, something that we could consider, but not requiring that we have to do it this way. Just in case, you know, maybe we don't follow it to the T. Um, and it's not, we're not, we're not held to that. So, you know, maybe every single issue or decision that comes before you, it's not, you know, those, those steps aren't necessarily pertinent. So it gives us the options, it lays out the steps, that's also in the policy. But it just kind of, it doesn't hold us to having to go through all of those steps before proceeding with adopting a new policy. So that's something that was in there. The biggest change is going to be to what was recommended for public participation. So if you wanna look to page thirteen.
I have.
I mean, I'm sorry, sixty one, sixty one.
It's sixty one.
That's what I, I like.
Put it at the top.
So the first thing you can see in red. So the way that Larry had written this policy is that he had made it possible that after every single agenda item, after the board discussion, but before you make a vote, we can reopen public comment. Ron didn't think that that was illegal, but he had concerns that this would really hold up board decisions. And that he felt that it could um, it could make the, they could make meetings feel like they were a little bit out of control. And that it was way above and beyond what is required by the Open Meetings Act.
We still have the two public comments.
Right, we still have the two public comments. Something to keep in mind, and maybe we add it to this policy, um, we could always turn an agenda item into um, a public hearing.
A public hearing.
And I don't know if we wanna think about how that happens.
Mm-hmm.
If it, you know, if it's either something the supervisor can request prior or a board member can request at the meeting and it's done by a vote or a second by a board member. Um, but we could always, you know, we could reserve the option of turning a public, an agenda item into a public hearing.
This is, I should know the answer to this, so forgive me, but do you, um, those hearings have to be noticed?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Certain, certain agenda items do have to be noticed and usually there's a public hearing component to it. But just because it's a public hearing doesn't necessarily mean it's gotta be prior, it's gotta be noticed.
So it could happen either before the meeting or maybe at the committee of the whole or even on the night of the meeting.
I think it can happen the night of the meeting, we could turn it into a public hearing and say that there'll be a public hearing on this item.
Would that specify when a public comment to hold that comment to later? Because it could be a public hearing at that point.
I think it would.
Yeah, so I, I would hate for it to get repetitive, uh, people saying the same. Alright, it's nice, though, that they can comment after we've had our early discussion because they learn things through that, that they might not be aware of, you know?
But it could be disruptive, presumably, if you form a vote.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Did, I'm sure Ron must have weighed in on, on the townships that have this.
He's never seen this.
Yeah.
That's, that's my idea, I don't, I don't think we should do it.
I don't think we should either, I have a lot of concerns about it. I like that we, um, we're open to the idea because we want that public participation, we wanna hear from them. But I think it just opens the door. I think it would have blurred such lines of inviting the audience into the discussion. And um, and I'm worried that once we start it, um, if we were to start it and it went poorly, ending it would be a bad move, it'd be a bad look, you know, for us. And I think that if we do, um, I like the idea of a public hearing and that it's by any, if any board member requests it, it's granted, you know, like that's, it's basically just, yeah, inserting public comment closer to the agenda item.
I was recently at a committee meeting that I'm on and the public was very involved. And um, it was disruptive to me, I felt that it wasn't stopped, basically.
Right.
And I think that's gonna be a problem, I really do.
Okay. Clark, Ron, do you have thoughts on this?
Okay.
So we're not making any decisions now, but I think that when we get to the meeting, if somebody wants to recommend striking that language,
Okay.
that would be appropriate at that time. Um, and then the second paragraph that's highlighted in red, this is allowing for the back and forth questioning by the public, that the public could pose questions to the board. Um, Ron had more so than the prior statement, Ron had real concerns about this, that, that the public could literally, you know, um.
Hijack them.
Yeah, hijack the meeting or, I think that's the other word, not um, what are they, what do they do in Congress?
Filibuster?
Filibuster. They could literally filibuster the meeting and, I mean, you are elected by the public to actually make decisions and this could prevent you from doing so. So his recommendation is to, is to remove this language. And we do get, you know, the staff does respond to questions after a board meeting if they're posed.
Questions come up and we tell them that.
Yes.
You'll be in touch, I don't know, you stay and do it right away.
Sometimes I do, yeah, sometimes we do.
They ask twice, when the packet's posted.
And I think there's a, there's a value to being able to process the question as opposed to answering on the fly.
Mm-hmm.
Like I think that we had our Riverside meeting, I did answer a question on the fly and it wasn't the whole, it was part of the answer, what I said was true, but it wasn't the whole answer. And I think when the resident got the whole answer, he was much more satisfied. So I think it prevents that from happening. Are there any other policies? Those are the only substantive, any to.
I'm saying, yeah, I thought I looked for it.
I read all of Ron's comments and yes, I agree, you know, they were all like, for instance, talking about Robert's Rules of Order. Like, yes, we use that as a guide, you know, we're not tying ourselves to things so then it could later be, we could be criticized, you know, um, so we're just softer language, we're not boxing ourselves in and opening ourselves up for criticism.
The only question I had on sixty five was our strategic, the strategic plan, we don't have to declare when that would be, right?
I think that we, yeah, I think that that's gotta be changed too, I think you're right, I think we'd say the strategic. The township board should comprehensively review the strategic plan annually.
Yeah, so.
All right.
So I'll, I'll update that too, yeah. And then I'm noticing that there was recommendation from Ron on page sixty eight to.
Yeah.
Under compensation, it said recommended employee benefits shall not create obligations to personnel over longer terms and revenues can be safely projected and that are not subject to adjustments due to losses in revenue or unpredicted costs where that create unfair situations or material unfunded liabilities. Um, Ron felt that that was a very tall order to live up to and that it would exclude or could exclude certain benefits that township employees already have. And that I think that those are things that we can think about when we consider employee benefits, but we don't, it might be impossible to guarantee that we live up to that statement.
Right.
I do like also that we have an official policy on welcoming new board members and training and things like that. I think that's really nice.
I do have one, now we don't have to adopt this policy right away, but I gave you two pieces of paper, one have dates on them. One has dates on them and then one is like an actual policy. So this was something that we talked about. Um, Larry was uncomfortable drafting this and he preferred if Ron drafted. And this is a policy about deputies.
Hmm.
Um, so essentially it says, you know, what the MCL says, that, you know, clerk treasurer have to appoint deputies and that they can stand in for a treasurer clerk in their absence, sickness, death or otherwise uh disabled. But then it also kind of clarifies when, what, what um, who has supervision when there is an overlap between the deputy clerk and there being a full-time employee of the township. Now, we don't have to adopt this right away unless you feel like this reflects what we were trying to accomplish in our discussions. So this is something that we can modify, uh, but this was the recommendation from Ron, given the input that we gave them. And so it never, it never made it into these policies, um, because Larry didn't want to write it, but Ron did provide it. So again, we can take more time with it, so you can process it or that, um, or we can include it in the adoption of these policies, which I would, I would include after the supervisor's responsibilities, that's where it would go. Um, but if it helps, I think that everything that's going on now with the township is consistent with this policy.
We, um. Would it be helpful to get the reflections of the deputies on this policy?
We could do that. We can do that.
I agree that we are following it now, it's just some of the language is a little.
And I kind of want, it's a good start because it doesn't, it doesn't speak to the collaborative-ish nature.
But, no.
Mm-hmm.
So Cynthia and I at times are more involved. It's not just the.
No, yeah, yeah.
So I would suggest on that.
Part of your flag.
When you're running an election or opening your jax year or we need, or we need to. I just think something, whether adding the word collaborative or just not being so, this is real start.
We can make it so it, like, it acknowledges that collaborative relationship but then sets some sort of die, like boundaries. Because I think that that's the concern that, like I, like I said right now, I don't think that they're like, over the last whatever month, like over months, I don't perceive any activities occurring that would be counter to that po, this policy.
No, I agree.
Um. But we can, yeah, we can soften it to acknowledge the collaborative relationship while also setting some, yeah, boundaries.
Because this is possess the powers to do these stuff, so that covers that. Everything is softening it with something more called that.
Okay.
Is that a change? Yeah, from back to that.
Um.
Any other feedback on this policy before I go back to Ron?
At the end of the day, we really value Peter and we value Lori and we need to have something to, to protect them and John and.
So I prob, so I, I shouldn't say prob, I will not have this included in the policies to be adopted for tomorrow. I will go back and get feedback from Ron and then feedback from Lori and Peter before, before presenting this back to the board.
Yeah. So are we thinking that we will probably wanna strike the language on page sixty eight as well? Will somebody put action?
That's the recommendation from the attorney to strike the language on sixty eight in this report for the financial practices policy. So we're, yeah, we're striking the language on sixty five in the month of and then we're striking the paragraph in red of sixty eights. And then. Yes. And that's on page sixty one, so yeah, the.
And on that, try and.
Yeah, I have a question on page seventy seven.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So this page here, is this proposing that this be the new agenda? Correct. So my questions are. In point four, public comment, community comment, uh, on non-agenda matters, we just talked about.
Right.
That's what they would talk about.
So that would be changed to nothing, just.
Yep. And then related to that, there's now, I don't see at the end of the meeting of the, of the, which I think would find valuable.
So I would add that as item eleven, public comment. And then we would have the optional board meeting evaluation.
Is that board comment to me? So, but then.
No, because now they're, they're board comments.
I will say that that would be a point two for like the board comments. Do you want to? So the, the policy proposes having this opportunity for board members to evaluate the meeting as kind of reflective questions about how the meeting went. Um, and the way that Ron recommended updating policy, that would all be discretionary. You could do it, you don't have to do it. There might be moments where you wanna do it and there'd be a place for it. Um, do we wanna add a separate section for board comments? Where it's just general comments? I know that Ron had suggested that that could occur in a public comment period.
Don't you get it?
But we have another.
Yeah, right. I mean, isn't that comments and questions for.
Put a report there.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so we.
Right, so, yeah, do we like moving it up front or is it more helpful in place at the end?
Let's just say someone had a question about a report or something or wanted to delve a little deeper into the wildlife committee or whatever, that ask a few questions. Would that be allowed at that time?
Yeah, you could pull.
Before the consent agenda is approved or?
You would request that it be pulled out.
Okay. Okay.
And then we could have a more in-depth conversation. So anything in the consent agenda can be pulled out for additional remarks.
And we do it right then or come down to this?
No, I think you do it right then. You do it in number three.
Cause reports are no longer. Hmm. Gonna be a lot getting used to changing.
It will be, yeah.
Oh, we're changing, we like these ideas and tell them out there. Here. It's gonna be hard, but we'll we'll um get through it and learn what is working well and what is not. What do you guys think about, we talked a little bit about it with Larry, about doing an evaluation at the end of the meeting, like, you know, hey, what worked well? Is there anything that, you know, we dropped the ball on? Is there something we could've done better? So it's not like, you know, a finger pointing session, but maybe just like, hey, you know, I didn't speak up during this time and I wish I would have said this or whatever, or I don't know.
Isn't that what? Uh the board meeting about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. How do we feel about that as a?
Well, I like the idea that it's discretionary.
Right.
I'm all about, what is it, three sixty evaluations, but um you know, sometimes it might not be.
Okay, right.
How do you all feel?
Well, I agree on the discretionary.
Yes.
Cause we haven't ever done it, doesn't mean it's not good.
That's right.
It could also be weird. Or beer off into maybe even being inappropriate, but I don't know, you'd have to. I guess it puts the other side of you.
Right. Of, you know. Give it some structure and I can look into that um cause I don't, it can't be a finger pointing thing. It can't be a personal attacking time. It just has to be like, sometimes there's things that are top of the mind that, you know, right after the meeting, like, hey, you know, I know, I thought like I shouldn't have kept the audience in check better at times, you know, and I I'd be perfect. Maybe so maybe it's just a true self-evaluation time, like, hey. You know. Just say, no, that didn't go how I wanted it to, you know, I'm gonna do this next time. I don't know. I don't know.
I think that's actually a good check for it because that's how I was imagining it, like, is I I know that there's, I imagine everyone has felt like this. Possibly that there's like a moment in the meeting where you feel like something that you said or something that you did might have been misconstrued and that you'd like to either, I don't wanna say it, yeah, restate it or address it.
Restate it. Sure.
Yeah, so I think the idea of it being more self-reflective is beneficial. And it's a good check on, you know, just going out and saying, Brenda, I hated how you did, you know, even if you only had done this better and we had a better meeting, like, you know. So maybe, yeah, it's hearing outside of of like a of a self-critique, then it's going into that area of inappropriate.
What if we just call renamed it additional board?
Thank you.
Um, cause I think it's got a specific function.
It could be that as well, but it could also be, oh, I did forget to mention.
How about this? How about we move it to the committee in the whole meeting, which you lose something, cause you're gonna have a whole lot that goes by. So it's more of a evaluation of how are we functioning as a board, how are we functioning individually? Um are there things that um were were missing, maybe that were um not really what we said we were gonna do, um just kind of an evaluation at the committee in the hall. So.
I like that. Cause that's the key thing with the purpose of the committee.
Right.
Which is more just discussion.
If, you know, at times there were, you know, when a person that, you know, that worked here or whatever passes away, we just, you know, we just like to mention their value. Where would that be? Would that be?
That would be number three, obviously.
Or never brief.
Okay.
Do like it better at the end, because sometimes, you know, somebody comes and gives a really great presentation or um.
Could you not say that when they give the presentation?
No, okay, here's a better example. I there was, you know, immediate, like after the building was done, right? And a lot of people wanted to thank you at the end of the meeting, you know, because everything had come to fruition, you had given us all the, you know. I don't know, I like it better at the end.
I do too. I need more.
Okay.
Can I just, do we need three sections where for board comments? It sounds kind of.
No.
Well, we're done. Well, because you have it in reports, then you have it comments and questions from staff or board members.
Okay, you do.
And then you're talking about the email. So I I don't know, if anything, you're like, too heavy then. Board comments.
It seems something I would, I like to.
This to the end.
But that's a good point, Brenda. Do we need number nine?
No, no.
Cause.
Comments and questions from staff or board members?
That happens when we're.
Yeah.
The agenda.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The manager input.
Yeah, I agree.
So we don't need that.
No, right, okay. And then this would be moved to um.
Some.
No.
Report.
Board meeting evaluation would be moved to the committee of the whole.
So I would go after the second pub- we're gonna add the second public comment?
Yeah.
And then you'll know, and then twelve would be board.
Yeah.
So what I what I have is remove board member brief comments from section three.
Yeah.
We are going to eliminate non-agenda matters from item four, right?
Mm-hmm.
We are going to eliminate item non comments and questions from staff and board.
Right.
We are going to add public comment after future topics. And then we are going to change board meeting evaluations to be held at the committee of the whole meeting and replace that item with board member brief comments.
Sounds right.
Mm-hmm, yeah. To our attention. A lot.
Tomorrow, I don't know what to do.
Anything else?
Strategic planning dates, was that it?
Mm-hmm.
We're ready to move on? Yeah. Alright. Do you have any needs of any?
So um John and I were assigned to identify a possible moderator for this year's strategic planning session. Um and John and I both agreed that Lainey Wells would be a great person to lead us. Um she's done strategic planning sessions for the Parks Commission. Um she did a great strategic planning session when we did our joint uh five-year Parks and Rec Plan. So she led not only the township, but the two cities and the public schools and she brought us all together and we had consensus. Um she really knows us. Um she's had a lot of involvement in the creation of the new zoning ordinance update, um you know, and other other policy changes we've made. So we feel like she would be a good person who knows us, who could lead us. Um she's proposing that this, so essentially we would have um a pre-workshop survey that she would create and it would be fairly straightforward and we provide that to the public and get their feedback. Um I'm also working with Morgan, we're we're compiling some data from um the building department so that we have an understanding of, you know, how many new builds we've had over the last few years, how many renovations? What's the increase in the average um building permit cost? Um so that we can see, have a better understanding of, you know, population changes. Um you know, the um the rental landscape, the value of homes. Um so we have all that data going into our discussions, but we we set it up so that we have two, I know that I'm gonna say shorter meetings, we're looking, we're looking at two and a half hours to three hours. Um but it's not an all-day session, but we'd really like to have two workshops because I do feel that after one workshop, your brain's going, you got a lot more ideas. Yeah, and you're like, oh, I wish I had said that. So we have an opportunity to, you know, work through a kind of strategic plan and then have the benefit of reflecting on that and then having another session a few weeks in the future. And then Lainey will take all of that information and create a final strategic plan report that will be adopted.
I like it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you have questions on this?
You want us to check dates now?
I kind of do, just so I can get back to Lainey. Lainey is proposing March twenty fifth as the first meeting date. It's a Tuesday, anytime between ten AM and two PM.
Would this be during her regular workday?
This would be during her regular workday on the Tuesday. So she's in the office, so she can do it in person with us.
So what length are you proposing?
I.
Like two and a half to three hours. You have something on that day?
Yeah, something that cannot be changed. It's a medical thing.
Um.
Sorry.
I'm so. Okay, so which the the March twenty fifth is out. Um. We'll look at the March dates again. Cause planning commission would be on the eighteenth and that's not gonna be good for her. Um is there any other dates, the week of the twenty fourth, that would work for everyone or no? That week is out.
You mean a different day she would come in?
Yeah, it was.
Whether it's Wednesday or.
With that, yeah.
I'm fine with Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, any of those.
Yeah. Pretty sure. I'll have to double check though. Yeah. Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday? Okay, I will check with her to see if we could do the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh. Um what about the April dates, the sixteenth, the eighteenth or the twenty second? We just need one of those.
Yeah, I think sixteen or eighteen are better, just so there's less time to lose track of.
Eighteenth is a Friday, just put it out, you know, I don't know if anybody is taking a long weekend or anything.
I think they.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, is it different? How about, is it, does it six eighth work?
Yeah.
You're thinking it would be ten to.
Oh, that's a good thing about the timing. What's the preferred timing for the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh?
You're saying it's two hours, right?
Like two, two and two and two to three hours.
If we consider it ten, maybe?
I'd like to.
Yeah, I like it.
Cause I can still.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then, so we're saying the sixteenth? The sixteenth would be fine, cause it's the week after our board meeting, right? So sixteenth, do we wanna do ten AM on the sixteenth as well?
Sure.
Okay, so I will confirm with you, the sixteen should be fine, but I'll confirm with you whether the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh would work with for the day. Okay.
Ready to move on to um progressive change order and practice?
This is this is new. I didn't get this till end of date Friday. Um I I had an inkling that this was coming, but I didn't know the the specifics about it. Uh but we did receive a change order from Progressive to dedicate more time to developing the concept for the exterior of the building and the site. Um and I think I kinda checked in with everybody um to to, number one, figure out what everybody's priorities are and what are like the must-haves for the site. And then number two, to kinda let you know that um the committee wasn't stuck on or felt like we had a winner in any of the concepts that Progressive had provided us. Um so we had a longer meeting, uh we sat down with our project manager, the architect, the landscape architect. Um and went through what we were really looking for, uh what our priorities were and then what we were willing to compromise on. And so part of the outcome of that meeting was prioritizing getting as much parking as possible. Um I've initiated conversations with the road commission to see if we can get some on-street parking, which I think would be helpful. Um keeping the best of your location.
Mm-hmm.
Um and the other thing that we talked about was a willingness to um keep the existing exterior material if we could do some updates to it. So a huge ticket item for the project is re- essentially like resurfacing each of the facades of the building. Essentially eats up the whole design budget to have to do that. Um and so we talked about sandblasting and refacing the concrete block on the, what is this, the, is this the the east?
The east.
The east and the north and then staining, painting, doing some sort of application to the brick that wouldn't be um maintenance intensive and wouldn't, you know, comprom- uh compromise the the material itself. Um in order to move more money around to do um more of a like kind of like artistic element. So we talked about that. Um we also talked about the the importance of whatever the design is for the outside really being integrated or dictating the design for the landscape. So it all felt like one cohesive project. Um they let us know that with all those meetings, we're kind of out of, or we've exhausted our budget for the concept phase. So I I do wanna make clear that we had, within phase one, there are two phases. Phase one is this concept, finalizing the concept. Phase two is getting into construction documents and bidding. Which that budget is not changing at all. What Progressive is saying is that we sh- we we need more money to complete this concept phase. Um they put together what they're calling kind of like like a, I don't wanna say worst-case scenario, but something that they think is beyond what we actually need. So they're proposing four additional um in-person steering committee meetings and an additional eight to ten weeks of work. We feel confident that we don't need all that time because we did have a very strong meeting with the architect and the landscape architect, and I think we made clear what those priorities are. Um so we don't think we need all that time. We do need some of that time to finalize. So what they're saying is that they would propose a change order in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, but they would be billing us hourly. So that would be the point if we reach thirty-six, where the work would stop and they would engage us again for another change order. However, we're just gonna be billed based on the additional time and effort that's needed. And that's gonna be billed against the thirty-six thousand, so we'll only be charged for what we need. So we may not hit that number. But if we're going to do something like this, this is the time to do it because if we make substantial changes after this point, it's a lot more pricey because you're not just changing the design. They're gonna have to redo the construction documents. And then if we get out of that phase, it's gonna be even more because they're gonna have to redo some engineering, um and then we're gonna get dinged from any of the subcontractors for for uh changes in 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 work orders. So we wanna make sure that we have everything the way that we want it in the concept phase before we start like saying, oh, we would, it would be nice if it was like this, it'd be nice if it were like that, because that's when it gets really, really pricey. So like this is a, this is definitely, I would say it's a high amount. I don't think that we need all of this time. It does give us a little flexibility. Um I talked to the committee, we're very cognizant of the budget and how we could cut back on um eating into that budget. So we talked about the committee is willing to travel to Progressive in Grand Rapids as opposed to having them come here every time. Um we've requested that designs be provided to the committee prior to meetings so that we have an opportunity to review so that we have an opportunity to review and be on the same page with our comments so that we're not giving mixed messages to Progressive when we do sit down with them. So we're thinking of ways to be more efficient with our feedback and more clear with our feedback. Um but it's, there's definitely a need for more time in the concept phase.
That's good. I was just thinking, the last sentence before budget action required.
Mm-hmm.
It it should probably be phrased a little more like the above where it says uh completion of this phase by billing hourly against A, not to exceed, because I can see people reading this rate not to exceed thirty-six thousand an hour.
Can you sit, can you show me the what's.
The very last sentence where it says um to work with A E on exterior and site concepts and the hourly rate not to exceed thirty-six thousand?
Yep.
I would phrase it a little more like the upper sentence.
Yep, yep, against say not to exceed.
Can I get a job?
Yeah, yeah, you can. Yeah, you're hired. I'll work over. Yeah, we can write this. I can make that modification.
Just like, you know.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, so and I talked to Progressive. They don't think that we're gonna hit that number. Um I think that there's a little hesitancy because I think they were thinking that we would be more smitten with the concepts that they came up with than we were. Um and we're just very, you know, we're very particular and we we let them know that we really, you know, we really want them to have a sense of us. And this is an opportunity for the township to have some sort of like physical manifestation reflection of of our identity. We don't have that. The cities have their downtowns and they have a lot of, you know, um you know, architectural pieces that reflect who they are. And this is our opportunity to share with the public who we are and where we think we're going. And it really has to be, it has to feel like us in order for for this, you know, for it to be acceptable to to the to the board and us move forward without breaking the bank. So realigning our priorities and letting them know we're open to reusing existing materials to save money. Um in order to get the design change that we're looking for. And I think that that was something that didn't occur to them.
Mm-hmm.
They were thinking that if we couldn't, that we had to reface it. And if if that wasn't accomplished, then we wouldn't be happy. So having that conversation. So I definitely think that we're better aligned with what we're looking for and what, and and they're understanding what we're looking for. But it is unfortunate we have to increase. I did go back and I looked at the other bids we got. And Verdis, who was our second choice, they had this phase budgeted at fifty-four thousand dollars. And that would be exactly what they're proposing now, we, if we hit thirty-six. So it could have been a case too of them underestimating how much time we need to be in this phase, but we're hoping not to get to that thirty-six. We we want to be, you know, we feel like we have a concept that they can execute and we don't need to uh mess around too much in this phase anymore.
I'm glad you're not changing the vestibule.
Yeah.
That was very costly and for not a much thing for your pocket.
Mm-hmm.
But um is there opportunity for the board to see the progression of this? Um
Yeah, so.
Well, how's that gonna go down?
Well, I can share with you everything that we have now, which is essentially not relevant anymore.
You know, with the next phase.
Yeah, but as soon as I get concepts, I can share them.
Okay, that'd be good. I would like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, cause we might have that.
Well, no, I think that's essential because we have to approve it.
Yeah.
Correct.
It could be a committee of the whole item, just cause as uh we've talked about in the past, we had with other projects, we presented with options for us to see before it moves along with whatever committee or.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, the only thing I would, I I could get, I could get feedback. I don't know if it's the best for the committee of the whole just because we wanna, we don't want to derail it too much.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I do, I, we do have a good committee. We have a, we have two professional commercial architects, an interior designer, and then someone who is in the art world. But I can, I can share and get your feedback.
Yeah, no, if you apply to give.
I just want to avoid too much like back and forth. That would, that would.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay.
So we can have one-on-one discussions.
Yes.
Or two, two-on-one.
I thought we were thoughtful to see what you had before. You're like, oh, I need to, I'm like, wow, this is amazing, you know, I was glad to see it.
Yeah, I know, I can do that.
And then there were questions, you know, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I appreciate um your willingness to kind of slow this down and the committee's willingness and your um willingness to be really creative and think outside the box and how can we um meet all of the priorities that the board has identified? I know everybody knows how I feel about reducing the parking, and so I'm really happy that that um it sounds like, I was like, oh, we can't do this, this can't happen. And it's it's sound like they're hopeful that they can meet almost all those priorities or come close to meeting all of them. So this is really encouraging and
Yeah.
Good hope.
You know, I think we need to to frontload all this and we're doing it so we're not, you know, incurring a lot of cost later and whether that's monetary costs or pullback from the community and um so.
Kind of.
Kind of a point there to stand on being open and getting feedback. Uh I learned about the vestibule. We moved from Steve.
Uh yeah.
Oh, cause Mary Jo saw it.
Yeah.
It's like, it kind of like.
I I, yeah, I think that's a biggie. It really was.
Didn't I know, Daniel, you and the committee both felt like things were being a little
Yeah, there was.
fast-tracked and that
Yes.
that was a little uncomfortable, so.
There, well, there was a, there was a miscommunication where they, like, cause I didn't want to share anything too soon.
Right.
Because there wasn't a commitment yet on the vestibule being moved. It was a concept. But in their minds, they felt that they had confirmation that that was the design. And I had to have a few conversations with Progressive to clarify that we did not commit to this design. So that that's, that's part of it that, you know, I wouldn't have shared something with you. I understand that you want to see the progression now and I will. At that point in time, I was incompetent with what they had shared or committed with it. And I didn't want to give the false sense that this is what was happening.
But our job is to watch for progress. That's what we're here as trustees, so you know, we do have to be kept in the loop when there's a major change, really.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I didn't want to show you something that wasn't gonna be changed yet.
Right, right, got it.
But I, but I will give you the, now knowing your preference, I will share the designs as they come. But know that we're not committed to it just yet.
Yes.
And as we discussed, it's in your interest too to know you, we have your back.
Yes, yes.
Right.
And this is a big project, so.
How do you think Progressive is responding? Are they just, are they agreeable to like, okay, we want to kind of pump brakes, do things different? Are they open to?
They're, oh, yeah, they are open to this. Um they, you know, they do want, they know the new schedule, which would be a spring twenty-twenty-six construction. Um they, they don't want to delay it too much because you don't want to lose that momentum. Um but yeah, they are agreeable. They let us know that there, you know, there could be construction cost increases pushing it out. But I think that we're willing to that that's something that we're willing to accept in order to slow the process down to ensure that we're all happy with what we're getting. But yeah, no, they were amenable. They're changing the structure. We were doing Zoom meetings, which was challenging. We're moving that to a in-person format, which I, which when we had our in-person meeting, we made so much progress. Um yeah, and I I think that they just really better understand what we're trying to to accomplish. And having everybody in the same room, we had the architect and then we had the landscape architect, and we really wanted to be a cohesive outcome.
Great, anything else?
Public comment? I've been anxiously waiting. Here, does he have a bomb to grab?
No.
No, I mean, like, literally speaking.
Hi, I'm Brendan, Township President, three-two-zero-eight Silver Acres Drive, and I'm Benamshire. May I comment something that's on the agenda tomorrow night?
Yes, please go ahead.
I have a mandatory training tomorrow night, so I can't be here for that. Um I was um going through the packet that was shared with me about the meeting tomorrow night. And my comment is specific to the Parks Commission and Sundown Park with the potential of landscaping. Would you please consider this? You don't have to answer me now. We brought to the township maybe ten years ago. You have a huge void for water supply there. You have property, underground tanks for water supply. You have a park would be below grade. You would help not only that whole corridor, keep this in mind financially. All those people in that section from one hundred and twenty-eighth down, what's Sundown, just north of one hundred and twenty-sixth? There's a zone there that those people are, for an ISO rating, insurance service offices are ten. It's punitive. Why? My water, you're, you'd see it five miles. So we have to go south to go north. Does that make sense? So we have, we are very proud of our achievements as a team to go from a six ISO rating, the higher the number, the worse your premium is. We started out six, but now I'm five, now we're four, you're now at three in the entire township. That's pretty huge achievement. However, we still have those residents in that corridor to stop the washout at our attempt. We've been contacted by realtors, insurance people. It is what it is. So we saw an opportunity to recommend how can we do, how can we promote safety in these areas where there's voids? And that was one that we brought to prior administration some time ago. Unfortunately, it was um, the implication was, well, we were paid for. We're not paying for anything. We don't pay for water supplies, we just. So that's gotta be defined. I don't think it's a huge thing, saying, what's twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollar underground tank? So my point with all this is just consider at least a discussion. I didn't have any time to say, hey, here, here's the area, but you know there's no water supply there. It's about a nine-mile round trip. There are many positive things about this. Potential for that we couldn't do it. Maybe it's too close to the bluff. Will the bluff receive? How about your new road? Is there a continuity between a water supply on the new road you're proposing? Are you gonna get the road? Are you gonna get the funding? So I don't want to overwhelm, other than I shouldn't be the same to spend thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars and go, oh man, no one told us this. Because we have new reform to work out. And I owe it to you to say we do a lot of good with investment, cause you're never gonna have even the small water supply. The way I see it. And you have a lot of properties being built there. Huge properties that require a lot of water. I can maybe deliver ten thousand gallons on scene, have another ten thousand gallons brought from UTLAID. Maybe have a fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand gallon water supply there. It gives us a chance, cause you're further from the chance. I won't bore you anymore with this. I just think it was important to say something about it. Or it goes too far. At least you had that consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other member of the public like to comment.
Say?
Would the, would you like to comment, Mr. Apple?
He's got nothing.
There's nobody?
Nope.
Okay. Go ahead. Turn to three at twelve oh three.
Thank you.
Maybe you're.
Give you.